Okay. Good evening, it's Tuesday, October 10th of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council and we'll start out with the roll call.
Great, Mijaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Sherlucky.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Bosniak Scanlon. Caraballo.
Absent an excuse.
Okay. Peyton.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Eily.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Okay, we have beloved Alders present and one absent an excused.
All right, thank you. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. Nobody was signed up for public comment. Under communications and presentations, are there any communications from Alders? Hearing none, we do have one presentation which will also be part of item number nine, but Gary, if you want to come up and just give an overview on the downtown tax district, we can do that now, I guess, as long as that's how we have it listed. And I'll pull it up here for you.
Yeah, this item is a follow-up to a resolution that was passed a month ago at the council meeting regarding starting to plan for a downtown tax increment district. This is the first part of our evaluation and we've come back to, just to, I guess, asking for clarification from the council regarding the type of tax increment district you'd like to create. We did an evaluation and we're recommending that this tax increment district be considered as a rehab and conservation TID rather than a blight elimination or a mixed-use TID, which it would also qualify for both, but have different characteristics. The type of projects that are coming forward are more characteristic of a rehab-conservation TID and we can get a larger-sized district with the properties where we know of with a rehab-conservation TID than we could with a blight-elimination tax increment district. So we're just looking for confirmation from the council that you agree with these recommendations so that we can continue with the planning for this TID on this basis.
You take questions now or when the agenda item comes up, whatever you prefer.
I just have a question. Gary, how did you determine the outline of this new district?
We started with the TIF request, which is up on the very top. And then we looked at what other properties, where we've talked to property owners and they've indicated that they're in need of rehabbing their buildings and they're looking for assistance in doing so. And then we did a visual inspection of the properties and we were looking for opportunities for additional housing units, so vacant second-floor spaces and obviously underutilized and underdeveloped sites, which a couple of the parcels around down in the southern end of the district qualify for that. Some of those parcels could probably qualify as blight, but they're also in need of rehab and conservation.
And then I think you said something about potentially expanding it later?
That's right. So we're doing this because we have a TIF request that has some timing considerations. So we're looking at what's in the immediate vicinity and creating a boundary for that. But I fully expect that there will be other downtown TIF requests that are not within this boundary and you're allowed to amend the boundary up to four times during the life of a TID. And so one of the options is if you do get a TIF request that's outside this boundary, that would be the time to amend the district boundary to include that or other projects that might be coming forward.
So you're saying it's more advantageous to figure out where the TIF request is, get that boundary as opposed to expanding it upfront for a potential than...
Yeah, there's two ways the city could look at this. You could look at it as, this is our downtown and we need a funding source to fund projects in the downtown, what should that look like? That's kind of a reactive approach to it, I mean, a proactive approach. The more reactive approach would be, well, let's wait and see what TIF requests come forward and then build our TIF district around actual projects that are here and now. And so that's kind of the path we're on at this point.
Any other questions at this time? Otherwise, we can answer more when we get to item number nine. All right, hearing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has three items on there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I didn't see where that came from. Oh, motion by Jensen, a second?
Second.
Second by Sherlucky, anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is R. 122 of 2023, and this one is coming from Stoughton Utilities. And there is an update in front of us and really the only updates that are on there involve the numerical changes that were highlighted on the document, wherever it says "Document Number," so there's three different places for those that are zooming in. One in the header of the resolution and then one in the "Whereas" and one in the "Be It Resolved." So having said that, Utilities, who would like to introduce that? Elder person Peyton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 122, 2023, authorizing the partial release of a platted public utility easement on Lot 141 of John Nygaard's Virgin Lake Estates, address 2108 Woodview Drive, recorded as Document Number 5618013, Dane County Registry. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second by elder person Hirsch. Is there anything you wanted to cover on this? Otherwise, you can defer to Jill for explanation.
I would just say first, we saw a preliminary resolution on this one. We had some corrections, I think it was related to some documentation that was provided. The corrections are here for us to review today and I'll turn and yield the rest of my time over to Jill.
Thank you. The easement was actually in the west, our ordinances don't allow for a fence to be constructed in easement. There was a recorded easement on the west property line of this property. This gentleman needed to put in a fence, he did so. Basically, that easement that we have there was to actually install a streetlight. Ultimately, that streetlight was installed in a different location and we no longer need this easement. So basically, that's what you have before you is to release the rights to that easement, which would then allow him to have that fence.
Any questions or comments? And then for Clerk Christian, did you get the numerical changes?
Yes, I have that, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, hearing no questions or comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is coming from the Library Board, R. 160, 2023. That's elder person, is it Legaki?
Yes, I'm just pulling it up.
All right.
This is Resolution R. 160, 2023, Resolution Requesting Exemption From The Dane County Library Tax.
All right, and you're gonna move...
And I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Peyton, elder person Legaki. And Director Ramsey is in the room.
Jim Ramsey is prepared and ready to explain this annual event.
Just push the... Thanks, Jean. Dave, are you able to, or whoever has the, able to go through the slides?
In the...
Sorry, thanks.
That's okay.
So, the resolution in front of you is identical to ones that you've considered annually in the past. It commits the city to funding the library at or above what's called the minimum appropriation. Municipalities that meet this obligation may request exemption from the county's library tax. This resolution states that the city will fund the library at a level which enables the city to request exemption from the tax. So it's pretty straightforward, but I want to take this opportunity, like I do every year, to talk briefly about county funding the libraries and about library funding in general. So if you'll bear with me, I only have like maybe four or five slides. So, how is our library funded? This pie chart here shows the contributions, you can see the contribution from Stoughton taxpayers in the orange there, makes up the lion's share of our budget, about 73%. A smaller share in blue there is the amount that comes from the county, from Dane County. And that's the part I want to focus in and talk a little bit about. Before I get to that, though, I'll show, there's a red slice of the pie that you can barely see that's about $15,000 there. That is reimbursements from adjacent counties for services provided to residents of those counties. So now, I'll get back to the minimum appropriation in a second, that's the subject of this resolution. But I hope you'll permit me a little digression to talk about how county funding for libraries is calculated. So county reimbursements, or we call them, alternatively, we call them county service fees, you'll hear me use the terms interchangeably. County reimbursements are calculated based on use, which in the library world means physical things checked out. It's not the best metric, but it is the easiest to collect. I'll talk about that in a minute. Our database knows where our library patrons live and where they pay taxes. And if you want to go on to the next slide, you'd see, it might be a little hard to see on the screen up there, but it is in your packet. You can see the top 10 census tracts in which patrons lived, who used the Stoughton Public Library over a 12-month period from August of last year to July of this year. As expected, the majority of our users live in the city of Stoughton. The rest come from surrounding municipalities, both those that have a library, like the city of Evansville, Village of Oregon. And, but most of them come from municipalities that do not have libraries. Most of our patrons living outside of the city come from the towns of Dunkirk and Pleasant Springs with Dunn in third place there. So you can go on to the next slide, if you would. The reimbursements, or county service fees, are paid by Dane County annually to Dane County libraries based on this usage, based on library usage, averaged out over the past three years. The formula is a complicated one, it takes into account services but also facilities based on our building square footage. But at the heart of the formula is something called cost per circ, or cost per circulation. This is nothing else but total expenditures of the library divided by the number of things checked out. State law requires counties to reimburse libraries at no less than 70% of cost per circ, but because Dane County recognizes the value in public libraries, they reimburse at 100%. Many, but not all, counties do that. You probably already figured out that the more people use our library, the more reimbursements we receive. So conversely, if there are disincentives that make our library less attractive, poor location, or outdated facilities, or shabby outdated collections, or surly librarians, the less county funding we receive ultimately. So the funding model based strictly on checkout places libraries in a sort of competition with each other for users and the county funding that goes along with those users. So that's one limitation of the model. The other came to light during the pandemic when many of our buildings were closed and we were offering alternative methods of service like curbside pickup. The circulation numbers used to calculate county reimbursements are averaged out, like I said, over three years to avoid a disproportionate impact from one bad year. Well, as you know, we had more than one bad year there. The abysmal numbers from 2020 and 2021 would have tanked the reimbursements for libraries across the county, across the state, really. So for that reason, the Dane County Library Board has decided to disregard those two years when calculating reimbursements. The shock of the pandemic made us realize what we'd always known, that circulation statistics don't fully capture the value that a library provides to its community. Notably, the statistics count only physical items checked out, so use of streaming and downloadable content, which is increasingly popular, I can tell you, is not captured in these statistics. At the moment, a consultant is studying the reimbursement formulas for Dane County and will be proposing alternatives hopefully here pretty soon. So you can go on to the next slide. That's how the county funds libraries. So back to the minimum appropriation. The minimum appropriation in the resolution you have in front of you is not the only requirement for exemption from the county library tax. There are a set of six standards, soon to be four standards because two are being eliminated, that libraries must meet. And the minimum for these standards are based on the municipal population. The minimum appropriation, the subject of this resolution, on the other hand, is based on the equalized value of property. You can go on to the next slide. Again, it's gonna be hard to see on the screen, but you have it in the packet. You can see here the 2024 minimum appropriations for the villages and cities in Dane County. The column labeled 2023 APP shows the actual amount appropriated in 2023 according to each library's annual report that it submits to the Department of Public Instruction. So just a quick look tells you that all or most municipalities fund their libraries well above the minimum, because the minimum is just that, it's a rock-bottom figure. Go on to the next slide. The next slide has a historical minimum appropriation for Stoughton over for the last eight or so years and you can see that it, these amounts correspond to the equalized value of property in the city. So, you know, in a general upward trend. And then you can go on to the next slide. And you can see here in this table showing the minimum versus the actual appropriation for 2023. The only municipalities that are funding only slightly above the minimum are those where the equalized value has increased so rapidly and the minimum has increased apace. So these municipalities are doing all they can to keep up. In 2023, Stoughton funded its library at 148% of the minimum. You can see how that compares to other communities there. For 2024, the amount of the appropriation that's currently in the mayor's budget is 133% of the minimum. Go on to the next slide. Okay. Finally, I want to leave you with this. This is the support per capita for Dane County libraries. In other words, it's the tax burden on municipal residents being served by these libraries. This is calculated just by taking the municipal appropriation divided by the municipal population. You can see Stoughton down there at 4686 per capita. This is not to suggest that the city isn't adequately funding the library, far from it. We are grateful for the support we've received in the mayor's 2024 budget. What this does show is that Stoughton residents and residents of the surrounding communities are getting an incredible value for their tax dollar. It shows that there's room to grow and as our community grows, we hope to grow right alongside it. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? I know that's a lot of information.
Any questions from Alders? I did have one question about this last slide. So when you talk about the support per capita, this is just the city portion?
Yeah.
So the townships, do they, do they pay into the system or is the money generated from the townships come from Dane County?
The money goes, the townships pay their county library tax to the county and then the counties distribute the money in the form of those reimbursements that I talked about.
Okay, so anybody that doesn't have a public library pays into the county fund?
Yes, exactly. So libraries, municipalities that don't support a public library pay the library tax. So they're paying their fair share for services, for library services. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, well done.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so we do have an action item on that, I believe. Let me just pull it back up here. This isn't it. All right, so we have the resolution and we did have a motion and a second. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 161, and that one's coming from the Finance Committee, elder person Schumacher.
All right. R. 161 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing the future acceptance of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Forest Fire Protection Grant Funds, pending review of the final grant agreement terms by the appropriate city staff. So moved.
Second. Second by elder person Jensen, elder person Schumacher.
Similar to grants that we have handled in the past for the fire department, let Chief Rip go through the details of what this one entails.
Right button. Sorry about that. So this grant is through the Wisconsin DNR specifically for wildland firefighting equipment, it's a 50-50 grant. We apply and we get a letter typically October 1st or thereabouts and we have to accept it or not by October 15th. And then we have up until the following April 15th to go get all the purchases, get all the paperwork, get it all sent to the DNR for them to review and file away. So we had applied for two different things, one of personal protective equipment, which is some lighter gear, boots, helmets and everything for people wildland firefighting as we're traversing across the fields and everywhere. Our normal gear is really heavy and imagine trying to run across the field in the snowsuit in 85-degree weather, it's kind of hard on everyone. So we have this other gear that just makes life a lot easier. The other part is a slip-in pump unit for our small ATVs. We had gotten a grant for this but weren't able to utilize it because we couldn't get the equipment delivered in time to meet the grant requirements. So we have, it worked to our advantage that we still have money in our capital budget for this year for Stoughton's allotment and we were able to take advantage of that. So we're gonna buy it out of '23 budget money for that. PPE is coming out of '24 PPE budget money for the city of Stoughton. So that's the quick rundown of it. The pumping unit that's on the ATV right now is just shy of 20 years old, there's some corrosion issues in the water tank. The repair shop has told us, don't bring it back, we've repaired as much as we can and we can't do anymore, so.
All right, any questions or comments on that? Elder person Peyton.
Just a quick inquiry, maybe I have an old copy, but what was the approval earlier in the Finance Committee?
We had unanimous approval.
The only question that came up at Finance was the age of the equipment. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item also came from Finance. We do have an ability to go into closed session, but we really didn't need to at Finance. Or for number nine, I'm sorry, for number nine, we talked about it earlier, Gary was up there. We did kind of have a motion at Finance, which wasn't in a resolution form, it was just a motion. We'd previously taken action on this item and we were just looking to kind of continue moving forward with this process. So I would turn it over to elder person Schumacher.
In our discussion that we had, we did complete that one all in open session, it wasn't a closed-session discussion for that one. The committee had come to the consensus that we believe to go along with the recommendation that Gary had made for the rehab type of TID for that would be appropriate as well as going with the initial border structure that was outlined in that plan.
All right, any questions or comments on that? Otherwise, did we have a motion that... Oh, okay, I couldn't, that was so long ago, I thought we, we did. Yeah, I think at Finance, I think elder person Jensen ended up making a motion. So are you willing to do that?
All right, then I will make a motion to, even though this isn't a resolution, but make the motion to accept the recommendations presented by Gary Becker regarding the downtown tax incremental district.
Your second? Second by Jensen, okay. Any questions on the motion? Elder person Reeves.
Not a question, but the same comment I had the last time, just to be clear, because there were several choices and I think we settled on, which I think was alluded to, but it's the rehabilitation-conservation TID rather than a couple of the other options that were considered, not the mixed-use or the blight.
That is correct and I can pull that up. And did anybody have any questions about the differences between the two? Gary can kind of highlight that for us.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that there's no, this is not a formal action tonight that when the TID is ready to be created and the planning is done, the city council will have a resolution before it that declares the type of TID that you're creating. So tonight's action is just a nod saying, yes, we agree with your, the path that you're on to go with a rehab-conservation TID so that we can continue our planning. And then there'll be a formal action to accept that as the actual type of TID that you're creating. Elder Reeves, what was your question again?
I have a question, just wanted to be clear that everyone was on the same page that, about which type of TID you were recommending and that's what we had agreed with.
Yeah, and this is just a clarification that no action here, formal action will be in a month or two?
Yeah, we have to go through the whole process, which involves the JRB and the public notices and all that.
But we do have to nod our heads?
Well, tonight, we did...
For me to be able to do rational planning, yes.
It's kind of a thumbs-up motion.
Oh, thumbs up, nod, nod, head.
Well, probably an aye will be sufficient, but either or, whatever you prefer. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, that takes us on to the rail spur. Okay, so R. 162 is from Finance.
We'd also done this one fully in open session, so we just made the recommendation for the resolution. But this is Resolution 162, 2023. The resolution is authorizing the mayor and city attorney to investigate the feasibility process and risks of transferring ownership of the rail spur tracks in the North Industrial Park from Stoughton Industrial Development Corporation, now defunct, to the city of Stoughton. So moved.
Second by elder person Jensen, elder person Schumacher.
We went through the history, the long history of how that rail spur came about. It's maybe even worthy of a short novel, I think. The outcome of it would be to transfer the ownership of it to the city so that the railroad has someone that they can work with and also so that we can apply for some funding to make the necessary repairs that we've looked at in the CIP process also, I think about $900,000 to repair those tracks.
All right, anything you want to add, Gary, on this one? So I think what we're looking for tonight is really just the ability to keep moving forward on the investigation to see if it would be advantageous for the city to possibly take ownership of the tracks. There are some representatives here from B&amp;G and they're the primary user of the tracks. So it would include what the process would be if we were to take ownership. We're getting some additional information as far as an inspection that was done and whether or not we can phase in the repairs that came along. and whether or not we can phase in the repairs that came along with that inspection, how they may be paid for. Those would come to a future meeting, as well as ultimately any agreement that we would have with the users. Those are all things that, if we were to secure ownership, that we would have to have additional conversations. Did I miss anything? We have two attorneys, one of you have to have an opinion.
I guess what I can say is the reason why we're looking for this sort of authorization just to move forward is railroads are complicated in general. There are very old statutes dealing with them. There are federal requirements that might apply. And we've also got sort of a defunct corporation that owns the property, which we have to figure out if we wanted the property, how we even acquire it from an organization that doesn't even exist anymore. So it's just going to take some time and work to see what it's going to look like, what are the actual risks and responsibilities for the city to take this project on. This is sort of step one, and once we gather more information, we'll bring it back to the City Council, so you all can evaluate the information and ultimately make a decision if those added responsibilities and costs are worth the benefits of owning the rail.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything you want to add, Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to make everyone aware that Ken Muckt from Wisconsin Southern Watco is here if there are any questions that relate to the rail side of things.
Yeah, I guess the only question I had was, in our last conversation, you were going to work on updating an estimate for the repair work. Obviously, anytime we talk about rails, we're concerned about the condition. I know there were some things identified, just really understanding the timing of when those repairs need to occur, and when we would see the updated estimate.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We'll have that probably in the next couple of weeks for you. But rail, typically rail is very capital-intensive, so it's very common for us to have phased-in approaches for our projects. So we have a number of components. First, we like to do ties, and then we like to do crossings, and then we like to do new rail. So I imagine it's going to be a three-phase approach. So it's not going to be a full $900,000 in a single year. We'll have that probably till the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and I think part of our conversation, and I don't want to speak for you, is really the more immediate concern is the ownership. Is that accurate?
Yep, yep, absolutely. So we just, we uncovered about two years ago that we have no rights to serve your industrial park on the north side. So that's very troublesome. We do operate the line, north-south line in Stoughton, seven days a week. We stop at B&amp;G Foods four to five days a week as needed. Last five years, we've hauled about 18,000 tons into the North Industrial Park. Next five years, it's going to climb up to about 20,000 tons. So we like to keep that on the rails versus our state and local roads. And we found out that our agreement that we had with the Stoughton Industrial Development Corporation is no longer in agreement, because it's a defunct corporation. So we just wanted to clean up the ownership, and then also clean up the operations. It's very common, very common for communities to own just the little spurs that come off our main line into your industrial parks. Very common for that to happen. Also, that will open you up and make you eligible for some state funding, up to 80%, so.
Thank you for being here tonight. Does anybody else have any questions for Ken while he's here?
I guess I'm just kind of curious, with the spur, and if our industrial park expands, can the spur expand as well to reach other businesses that might need rail?
It can. It depends on where your vacant land is. It depends on where you want the spur to go. Geographically, we can make that work. We do have two other owners of spurs that connect to this spur that's in question, one of which is Zolf Joseph. So they own part of the spur that goes into their facility. So depending upon where your vacant parcel is, where you want the rail to expand, we can make that work from an engineering perspective. We do that, very common. We just added about 2,500 feet in the city of Milton to cover some vacant land and open up a lot of new parcel for industrial development. And we've done that in Baraboo a couple of times as well. So that's very common, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for being here. So we do have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so we have two more items that have the potential to go in the closed session. The first item is relating to Emmy Roth. You might have noticed that we do have a TIF application in your packet. And there's also a presentation from Emmy Roth that we had previously seen. We have representatives from Emmy Roth, I believe, are available. And I guess we can kind of open it up. Went through Finance earlier tonight. Alder Person Schumacher, anything you want to kind of introduce us with?
We went through a lot of information in it, so sit tight.
Yeah, we're not really looking for action tonight. We kind of want to keep things moving forward, but we also want you to have time to kind of absorb all the information that was included here, including the TIF application. And as we go into closed session, we can get into kind of the specifics of what we know from our financial consultants as we go through this process. Is there anything from Emmy Roth that you guys want to highlight at this time? Guess not.
I don't believe there's anybody from Emmy Roth.
Okay, they were at Finance earlier, so I think everything they covered, they covered there. And they basically just wanted to acknowledge that they have an application in here. The purpose of the TIF request would be to install solar panels on the roof of the building. Initially, that was part of their plan when they went to construct the building between, you know, cost overruns and supply chain issues. That was something that kind of got put on the shelf. They're looking to kind of reopen that conversation and looking for TIF assistance to do so. So that's kind of the gist of it.
That's kind of as far as we went, at least in open session, anyway.
Yeah, so I think we would be prepared to go into closed session if you want to have further details about the financial stuff. Otherwise, the plan would be is to bring this to the Finance Committee again in two weeks, and then maybe come to the council with a recommendation of, you know, what we could, you know, work with on Emmy Roth on the consideration of their application.
So we're not?
That's totally up to you guys. If you want more information, we can go in the closed session. We do have another closed-session item that we would do after that. So more than likely, if we went into close now, we would go through both items and then adjourn from closed session.
Should, is there anybody from the second closed session that we should go first? This would be the initial, without waiting in the hallway?
Yeah, the second one would be Pete here from the RDA to do the brink update. We could certainly do that first. We would go in the closed session for both of them, and then we could figure out whatever your preference is.
I'm just thinking, like she's sitting out in the hallway.
Okay.
I would make a motion to flip them.
All right, so we can read the closed-session language. We'll take a roll call vote, and then we'll flip them in closed session.
Sure. The council may convene in closed session per state statute 19.85 Parent I, Parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. An iso move.
Second.
Motion by Hearst, a second by Schumacher. Any discussion? And then when you're ready, Candy, you can do a roll call vote.
Okay, Hailey.
Yes.
Johnson. Thank you. Payton.
Aye.
Vajaski. Butler.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kerlucky.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Wozniak Scanlon. Legaki.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, give us a couple of minutes, and we'll get started. I assume you want kind of Pete. Pete, you can come up and sit down, or stand up, or whatever you want to do.